I'd like to call this meeting's order. Your first order of business.
I'd like to be the distributor of that in the United States of America. And who's the project, which stands one nation under God, any of this will deliver to justice as well.
First order of business is approve tonight's agenda. Motion to approve.
I'll make the second half.
The motion is second all in favor. Aye, opposed, so carry. Any corrections, additions? Did not have like a recommendation to approve the minutes of the May 7th.
I'll make that recommendation, second.
Recommendation in second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Recommended approval of list of claims, everybody has a chance to see those. Any questions on any of the claims? Motion to approve. I see Nick, I got one question, I see we bought four baskets, was that for the dock from, was it four baskets from Jared Baldwin?
Yeah.
For our docks, were they $250 each?
Yeah, $25.
$25?
$25.
$125.
How much?
$125.
It says times four.
Well then you must have bought eight?
That was one of the bills.
Eight.
Okay, I think he said four, so that's why I was checking, did I check that? Okay, good, so that's a correction on that, so that list of claims should read that $1,000 to Jared Baldwin should be for eight baskets. I think we gotta keep track of that too, because I think it could be frozen ourselves. Okay, any other questions on the list of claims?
The one with the North Cooch thing, what was, is that one? You got big bill here?
It's not.
Is the North Cooch, is that sewer bill where?
Yeah.
Yeah, sewer bills.
Oh, it's just highlighted and it just says big bill, like.
Well, it's probably seven, seven times what it should be, but seven or eight times what it normally is, isn't it?
Yeah. Do you want to leave it out or you gonna pay it?
Well, I'm just asking, what was it? I think that discussion on that later in the day, and on one other thing, so I said, let's just, okay, we're talking about that, okay? Well, we can't give a motion to accept the bills unless we clear that up, so let's, let's table till we get that other discussion, and then we'll come back to the list of claims, okay? Review the county balances for financial changes with general water sewer funds for May 31st. Recommendation to table that for the next council meeting? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Next order of business then would be the liquor store operating fund, Jennifer? I see you have an average month, eh?
Well, I mean with everyone sandbaking and everything.
You made $1,000 a month.
Yeah.
Five times seven, it's 35.
No.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's great enough to get, I don't know what you're doing, but whatever you're doing, it looks great as hell. But again, I'm totally impressed because whatever.
Well, I got one question.
Yeah.
The, from 2021 to 2022, there's the dues and subscriptions are 200, 800, now this year is 858, the versus gets up around, or?
Um, for what we listed clients, I don't know what.
What, Mike?
I had the lines of dues and subscriptions, and then there's miscellaneous. It looks like one.
We've done a lot of radio ads, we've done a lot of radio ads, and so I'm sure that probably falls under that.
Again, dues and subscriptions last year was 200, now this year it's 800, and miscellaneous was 258, this year it was 800.
Oh, the 258 is, that was the gas money when we went to the conference.
It just spun it out, right? It shouldn't be 800, 800, 258 or something?
Yes, yeah.
That's what I thought, it got spun it out, just to table. Not that it's not right, it's wrong, that's all I can say. Well, what do you got planned for this coming month? Wasn't the shutdown supposed to be this month, so I supposed to have to readjust?
Yes, we were going to get the tent up, and then the flooding went a little longer, and when the guys have a chance, we'll get the tent up, we'll get the beanbags going again. We really didn't know when the lake was gonna crest and everything, so we're kind of playing it week by week now, but we'll get the beanbags going as soon as we can. We got the big barbecue cook-off coming in July, that's always a big one, so we're just gonna keep prepping for that stuff right now.
Sometime in the future, maybe we should have a flood appreciation, a volunteer appreciation.
I was talking to Cheryl about that, and I would love to host a party for that.
Party?
Yes, absolutely.
Fix it in any time.
Yep.
What's going on on this Friday, is there a band here?
Here?
Yeah, it's here, it's at the Ranger Museum, or the Ranger Municipal Building.
There was a band last Friday here.
On the radio.
It's at the Ranger Hall.
Yeah, the Ranger Hall, it was on the radio today. So that's that, right, it's a hall.
It's Dylan's Drive, right there. Yeah, you have to look, it's Dylan's Drive.
But is the liquor store gonna have a bar in here?
It must be a private party of some sort, I have no idea.
If they had it on the radio today.
They've been posting it all over town.
Yeah, the song, "Like They Were Been On The Park," I was wondering if it was tied up.
Is it open to the public?
I don't know, what did it say?
They have a poster on a bunch of different places.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Oh?
I don't know what it definitely said.
I don't know what it is.
It's in the band? Yeah, it says band show. It just says a band show, but how we described it?
Well, we'll offer it. Other than that, I have nothing. Anything else for Jen? Okay, Jen?
Before I'm done, I am gonna hand out this for you guys, I'd like to.
What is it?
It's something that has been brought to my attention by some of the senior bartenders, and.
What is it?
It's, some of them are looking for a raise right now with inflation and everything. What I would, what I'd like you guys to do is to read this over, maybe table it and address it next week. I don't, you know, it's just some of their concerns that they have right now with everything climbing in prices right now. So, I'm just doing as they ask.
Can I make a motion to table this meeting for next meeting? Second. Are we going to open? Yeah, I think we need a little time to talk about this.
That's what I figured, that's why.
Did you make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this request by the bartenders until the next meeting. Second. Wherever, motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. All right, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Has a motion to accept the liquor operating statement?
Yes, we'll need a motion to accept.
All second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Next to me, it's important, Nick, we should have had a busy guy, so I'm anxious to hear. So what kind of issues do we have besides the flood, or because of the flood?
List is too long.
List is too long. I do want to recommend, I do want to commend you for getting hold of the Rural Water Association to make those homes available to, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but Nick went on his own and talked to the Rural Water Association. He brought up a bunch of pumps for use for the citizens of the area, and that was all on him, so I appreciate that. Taken the rule by the horns and getting some help for these people, our citizens and also county people, so kudos to you on that. Anyway, what else you have?
We had to sponsor projects, we're starting now, after we get calmed down a little bit with this flood, it seems like it's starting to slow and slow down, so we can get back to some of the big list, big item projects we had lined up, that probably should already have started, but.
Yeah, we'll wait till we can do the whole bunch, we just have to wait till the flood recovery goes down. Did Dennis Ollister ever come by and pick up the?
No.
Okay, I suppose he's trying to.
Yeah, he's got nowhere to put it right now.
Right, okay. Through information, I think he sold exercise equipment, but whatever he picks it up, we'll be fine.
Yep.
I see the moment continues, so everything else. The docks, we've taken a lot of pictures of everything, because as you know, again, we're gonna have to be recording all this stuff, so anytime we have incidents where we have some kind of damage, because I'm sure the county, the state, the city, I think it's a 9.3 billion we have to get to to receive federal assistance, so we have to acquire or accumulate all our damage caused by this flood, and once we hit that criteria, then federal funding kicks in, which has all kinds of benefits for the cities, counties, and the people, so. It's really important, anything that shows up, the simple things, just like we were talking about, you know, to get a sewer back, or if you get, you know, where you have to go buy baskets and stuff to save your docks, all those are costs that incur damage, and of course, we can prove the damage and we can get eligible for funding, so, very important that stuff.
Yep.
Okay, is there anything else for Nick other than, you know, keep the storms who are uncovered?
Will do.
Wasn't update on, do we have an update on the trucks that we're gonna pursue, or the maintenance?
Yeah, I just talked to Cheryl earlier about that too. It's at Ekman's right now, they did their side of it, and we're waiting for.
I just was waiting for Dennis to sign, he's a paper, and I have to overlook the documents for our side.
Getting closer.
I guess nothing else, there might be some things we're gonna look at, so this fencing, some of these barricades along the waterfront and everything, we gotta make sure that they're in place, we have an incident milestone that is pretty critical, so we wanna make sure we keep some of these barricades if we can. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Flood update, I guess I'd be Davey, or I try, I mean, I think you guys probably know just about as much as I do about the floods.
Crested sometime last week, this, early this week.
Did you speak to my partner?
Yeah, I'm speaking.
Well, I think everybody knows the lake crested, I don't know when it crested, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it hasn't moved really over an inch, and hopefully they're expecting, what was it, 1 to 3 inches in the next week? But it took a long time to crest, it's gonna take a long time to come down. You know, we haven't even assessed the roads yet, the red roads here, I mean, 46 and 20, they got water on them, quite deep in some areas. We'll assess the damage, and we'll try to go for mitigation, so there's the damage, and then there's the mitigation. So, right now, we get FEMA funding, you know, they'll pay for all the damage. If you wanna go for mitigation, you can double the damage cost if you do flood mitigation, so, you know, that's our goal. That's gonna be a challenge in some areas on what we can do, and I guess, like I told Dennis earlier today, 46 is really a problem, if you wanna raise it out of the flood level, we're gonna need a bunch of right-of-way, and we'd be looking for the property owners to buy in on it too, I mean, we're not gonna have a lot of money. You know, if we're gonna raise that road four feet, or whatever, I'm not saying we're gonna, but if we do something like that, you know, we're gonna have side slopes, we wanna have ditches, it's gonna be a big project. 20, you know, for the most part, fared pretty good, except for. Yeah, and that wouldn't take much, we still, we'd have to design it and see what we can do, but, and we're looking at all our county roads like that, I mean, I would like to raise them all up to the 2022 flood level, and that's gonna be a bunch of money. I think what we will do is we'll prioritize what we can do, I mean, where there are casade, county, state aid highways, I mean, we do have funding for that, you know, that comes from the state. We expect to get some FEMA money, and we expect to prioritize our capital plan after this flood for the next five years. We did pass not too long ago that half a percent sales tax, I think we're gonna, you know, we had a priority list, I think that priority list is gonna change, now the board can change it, but I think some of that money needs to go out to the county and township roads, and get them up in the air a little further. This thing with gravel that we did, it worked, but you don't wanna drive on that very long, and it probably won't stand much wave action, so. I do see right by Reneer Beach, Nick helped us out, filling up that, bringing some rock in and fix that, but we're supposed to get some strong west winds on Thursday, they'll be pounding against the side there in that sand, you know, it doesn't take much to wash that away, but we got some rock down there now, hopefully that will help. You know, I didn't really come prepared to say much, I mean, right now, they've, what do we got, a last estimate on the county's cost is about $3 million, I think, if we're taking, but that's without damaged roads, and in this 9.6 million, that federal threshold, that can include multiple areas, it would be St. Louis County, it would be us, maybe we can even tie in what happened in the Red River, and then, you know, that 9.6, you know, we'll go leaping over that like it wasn't even there, so.
Well, we haven't assessed our damages yet, but obviously, they're constantly occurring, as you know, we have sewer issues, so we're gonna have damage to our sewers, our sewer pumps, I don't know if you could accumulate the additional handling, the effluent, we have a, you know, a seven times larger deal, International Falls had $250,000 in sewer charges, so I don't know what's.
You'd think that would be negotiable, North Cooch sanitary, I'll leave that to you guys, but those were extraordinary events. You know, in Cooch County, the Cooch sanitary district has some damages and some expenses, I mean, they did stuff out at the plant when the water got high, I'm sure what they did east of here was, they've done a lot of stuff, I mean, how much they spent sandbaking all those grinder stations.
Well, again, we've, you know, like I said, we're trying to document everything we have as issues, we're doing it weekend. I know the county's been good at opening up the road, putting gravel on, helping assist with senior people out, so we wanna thank you guys for everything you're doing for us, I think I told everybody, we're in this battle, we're in this ring right now, and win, lose, or draw, we're fighting out, so we need each other, we give each other, and we get to be a lot.
Dennis, you're right, when it comes to FEMA, incoherent version, document, document, take pictures, they're telling us that all the time.
And that's exactly what we're doing, and, but all we can do, I can tell you some encouraging things, I had conversations with Charlie Carlson, who's Governor Walz's emergency management man, and Senator Koberger has access, and they're talking, they're really looking at the big government funding plans that will make a difference to an area, so they're looking at a litigation plan for this area, and he's forming one right now, he's one of the big, the state level that assists us in communication, also with the senators, and so there is some, we're on, let's put it this way, we're on the list, they're looking at us, they're looking how they can help us through federal monies, but there are some large, large, large monies out there, and we do have the support of these people, when I say the state, the governor, the senators, the congressmen, so we're under the public's, we're under the eye, we're good, so we're good that way, we'll see where it comes. Like I said, we gotta get through this, and then the big problem, trying to solve this problem, so don't happen again, and that again will be, you know, where we need the assistance.
You got anything you wanna say, Fred?
No, I think the biggest takeaway from this meeting are, we're gonna focus on 46 first, that was always in our budget plan anyways, to do some form of resurfacing with this flood, as much as we could have. We have to do some grade raises as well, get a little, auto potential flood situation, yeah. It's gonna be probably six to eight weeks before the water level gets back to somewhat normal level, so at that point, we'll be able to start to assess these roads, hopefully develop the flood.
You got some questions?
I just have a question about, because I don't understand, FEMA funding, you're talking about raising the roads, if they're, if it gets to that 9.6, whatever, is there FEMA funding available to build the road, or is it gonna be on the taxpayers around that road to pay a portion of that?
The general, you'll get repair money, and that would be to repair the road like it was, and then you'll get double that if you do mitigation. So our plans would be go for the mitigation, but when you're talking about raising the road four feet, it's gonna be very expensive, and I don't, if you put retaining walls up, or.
There's gonna be a lot, you know, this, like I said, we have the current problem, we know that, it's just the water that's at it right now, we have to control that, do the best we can to get through that, once we're through that, then we have to engage forces to help us solicit FEMA money, and that's the first step, trying to get these certifications that we're under federal, you know, federal funding, get federal state funding, and then get the support, which we're doing now, getting the support of the senators, the congressmen, the governor, and so I'm working that the best way I know how, and I have quite a bit of success, at least they're talking to me, anytime I call, they call me right back, and so we're having some success that way, and once we get to that stage, you know, we'll just have to keep everybody posted, it's gonna be a long battle, but we don't, like I was telling the sewer management team this morning, we'll fight this battle, but going forward, so we're not sitting here two years from now, three years from now, four years from now, having the same conversation because of flood, I mean, we put up enough bags, we have to figure out some way of not happening again, but there's so many multiple moving parts here, you know, the water can't get away, there's only one exit, so how do we approve that, how do we approve some dykes, you know, and I give raising 46, you gotta understand, we can raise anywhere, but then there's a right-of-way issue, when you raise road four feet, and look at the slopes, you wanna, you know, I mean, so then you gotta start acquiring right-of-way, and people are all in favor of that until they have to give up their front yard, and so, these are complicated issues, so there have to be designs and things that, you know.
I don't know about that, but I was asking for the consent.
Well, I'm just elaborating, this is a big, big problem, but I can tell you, I've done this since the 1990s, now East Grant Forks, Crookston, Minot, and I've worked with the engineering firms and the county services, and the federal governments, the state governments, so it can be done, but we have to start it, and it's a big, big process, and lots of complicated issues, which, you know, it is not fair to try to throw them all on the county engineer's lap, or the city council's lap, because they're beyond our skill sets, and even if we have the skill, it takes a lot of resources and time, and so you have to get the people on board that can bring the federal funding, and bring the plans in, and, you know, and there'll be a lot of work to do this, but that's the process.
So I'm just curious, cause I, so if you raise, for example, 46, if you raise the highway, the people that are there are still gonna be in flood.
Well, see, those are the type of the issues that we're, that I'm explaining.
So I might leave the street, the roads open, but all the same, people are still gonna be flooded if their homes still exist, right?
So that's exactly what we're doing in Minot right now, you put a dike up, and now you got all the rain in it, and then trap behind the dike, and then you have to put up storms, so we're in this station to get rid of that water, they pump it over the dike, so, again, there's complicated issues, but it's all been done, but it takes a lot of money, it takes a lot of planning, and it's, like I said, it's just the time.
Amsterdam, isn't it? Amsterdam is done.
Well, sure, they can do it, we're gonna do it, you go to East Grant Forks, go to Grant Forks, go to Minot, it's happening, and it's done, and it's on right, but again.
But there is a lot of buyouts.
Well, there has to be buyouts, there's gotta be things like that, well, there's other ways of doing it too, Dave, I didn't discuss that, but there are some, there will be some acquisitions maybe, or some where it's necessary, you know, to take a home, obviously, they'll be compensated, but there's all kinds of things that will happen, but it's, it's a process, and it's a big process, and I had a conversation with the county board today, and I am, I've been, I may be offered to bring up a management firm that does this stuff, our engineering, and they're just gonna make a kind of assessment, and I'm gonna talk to the county about how the process works, what they have to do, how they're gonna secure and fund, and things like this, and there's no charter, they're just gonna give the county some advice, and at that point, the county can make some of these decisions, same as we're gonna have to do, because at some point, if, you know, unless you wanna put sandbags up for the, for the rest of your retirement, we gotta figure out something to do that, you know, so.
So, do you wanna just stop for a minute, just of the flooding situation, and insurance, whatever, and he was eligible by insurance?
He's not, that's my exception, he's not really comfortable with that by, by way, and being on.
One of the things I'll say is now's the time to do it, because a lot of the federal permitting, they can make it a lot easier, and one of the things, if we're talking dykes, raising roads, it's a permitting that's gonna be a problem, and they can smooth the way for that, sort of just push it out of the way if they want to.
Yeah, so there's an exception, just by bypassing the sewer, the MPCA allow you to do that in emergency case, they won't let you continue to do that for the next 10 years, but on, like, as we had yesterday, that emergency bypass that we had to do, they notified the state, and it happened, and it's okay, and they'll allow that once in a while, but they're not gonna make a permanent habit of doing things like that, so, again.
So, wasn't there a map at one point that showed the flood flooding and rate?
That's on the agenda, so we're coming to that again, so we'll try to just get, is there any more questions for Dave? I appreciate you showing up and having this question.
Yeah. One thing that I sort of learned in this is, when they're talking about the lake level, and you hear what's issued on the elevation, that's the nineteen twelve data. That means that's based on nineteen twelve. When you go out and you survey with instruments and stuff, that's nineteen eighty-eight. There's a, there's a pretty good big difference between the two. It's about point six eight feet.
What?
Six, point six eight feet difference?
Yeah, three quarters of a foot almost.
Yeah, just a difference, three quarters of a foot, they can use different stuff.
It's just, that's what they use when they report the lake levels. So Mindot had a concern with that when they were raising Highway eleven.
What, yeah, what point do you raise it to?
Yeah, when you're out in the middle of the stuff.
Where do you build your docks? Where do you build your floodplain? Where do you build your highways? Currently, right now, we're two feet above the two thousand and fourteen flood, and only about three to four inches above the nineteen fifty flood. But again, what data is that based on?
Yeah, no, that's, that's why they keep everything in nineteen twelve, so that you...
So that's, you're comparing that with standards. But still, we're three inches, and with this coming, we could easily be six, so...
I think it's going to take quite a bit of rain to, to go in a different direction.
I gotta, again, thank the county and all volunteers and everybody that's struggling with this, I realize what a struggle this is, and...
You know, I know they've demobbed now, but the National Guard...
Right, we have a hundred thousand sandbags on hand at Cary Park, and...
And hopefully, we have to figure out how to get rid of them, instead of everybody needing them.
Yeah. Hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, like I said, we've got our flood relief plan, but we'll just move on to the next one. Actually, the next one is the FEMA floodplain map, the amendments and necessary steps to follow for the floodplain regulations. We have to approve that, to make sure we get flood insurance, so we'd have to do some.
So they did?
Go ahead, Cheryl.
The Department of Natural Resources has been working on the floodplain maps for the whole state of Minnesota for the last, how many years? And they've been working on Cootie James for the last several years, and they're now working digitized forms, so you can actually interpret them if you have them now. It's very complicated, is it to you? No, anyway, that is kind of, anyway. Their floodplain maps are going to be in a digital form, they will be finalized October twenty-seventh, and Rainier will have to amend its floodplain ordinance to incorporate the map, and then some other changes to the DNR's flood, model floodplain.
And we have to do that by November seventeenth?
We have to do it by August seventeenth, because it has to be reviewed by DNRs, and then it has to go to the DNR. So, you know, I'll have it presented for the next meeting. And all that has to happen in order for people to be able to participate in the national flood insurance.
Excuse me, so was there an old one that showed the floodplain, and now there's a new one that shows an updated map?
The old one is just a paper map, it doesn't have any contour lines, it doesn't have any, I mean, it's super vague. So this is a real digitized map that's got contours and elevations, and it can actually, it's actually a functional map.
Was that, is that part of the people? See, I believe that on our abstract that's sitting in two-star and safety positive, it missed the floodplain by our property, and yet we're up relatively high, but I believe, I believe part of our property is on the floodplain, according to that.
Um, yeah, we will actually have to let you say it, yeah. Because it's different, so instead of saying one percent, ten percent, five percent, I have to be trying, because it's kind of complicated.
Well, there is a specific rule we have to follow to manage this floodplain, and so whatever actions necessary to keep us abreast of the floodplain rules and regulations, we have them, and we'll make appropriate actions to keep us in, I guess, updated on the floodplain, so that anybody that has insurance or requirements, they'll be effect, I mean, they'll be in effect. If we don't do that, then in fact, it would notify, I believe, some...
Yeah, if we haven't had a lack, we have to be in the national flood insurance.
So we will do that, we'll pass any of the, fast, if we can, so notify that, you know, the changes, so just let you know that, so...
Moving on, then, is there anything we have to approve tonight, Cheryl?
No, I just want to let everybody know that that was...
The next is the EPA tree management grant for the DNR, and we did receive the contract, and it's like for twenty-five thousand dollars for, they'll be necessary to remove and replace trees.
The next step is going to be forming with TreeGor, and then we'll have to get the DNR's P O for tree inventory, committee forest management plan, and then the development of the tree inventory, and so we'll be working with to control the water to make all that happen, so.
Okay. Obviously, we can sign the contract, but we probably should approve, we should probably appoint a committee, I thought we had one about that, did we?
It's not been volunteered.
It hasn't been formed yet. It couldn't really be until we got this contract signed.
Yeah, okay, I know we talked about it, did I remember? Okay. You going to form the committee tonight, or the next meeting?
Next meeting. Well, we, it's volunteers, the next people, it's citizens too, so...
Sure.
We're looking for people who have tree and forest background, if possible.
See, I think I've mentioned so many words before.
That's how I understand.
But there are other people that are, yes.
Yeah, and that's fine, so we'll try to put that together for the next meeting, volunteer board, whoever else wants to be on, so we can get, start getting some of these things in, because it's been wrong with it. Okay. Again, now we're going to open up this North Cootie sanitation, the monthly bill, as you can see, that goes with our monthly claims bill, ninety, ninety-five hundred dollars for our sewer bill this month.
Yeah.
And it traditionally is...
Twenty-eight hundred.
Three and a half times, three times, three times what it normally is, and simply because there's so much effluent coming through, again, we've got to, people, hopefully, everybody listening to this, if you have a salt pump in your basement that's pumping into the sewer, pump it out the window, or wherever you can. This effluent has to be coming in niggly, that's one thing I want to bring up. Any city mammals, or anything that possibly could be under water, or any possible way of sandbagging, put plastic over, plastic over, put sandbags on, try to keep some water from flowing in, even around the lids, you know, even though they seem tight, a little bit here, and you get enough of them, it's up to quite a bit.
And we probably, I think, probably five or six now.
Yeah, anything you see, you know, some of the old metal, it's a lot of water, you know, especially with hydraulic pressure, you get five, six pounds of water, you know, when it comes to high-pressure holes, so...
Is this something that FEMA can help with?
You know, I think, I mean, that's way big difference, I mean, I was straight, I was, what without? I think...
Hunter, why don't you first then?
Do you know when the next sewer, when the next sewer district, or the sewer board meeting is? John, when's the sewer?
Next Tuesday, next Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Eight AM.
Well, John, you're a representative, we would like to ask you if there's any kind of relief because of this water, you know, most of it is, I don't, John, maybe you can tell me this too, I know we have to go through the treating process before they release it, but obviously, there's a lot of lake water in this sewer, so it's, less treatment should be required. Is it, is it less costly to treat it, obviously, because it's less effluent in it, or is it the same cost every gallon, it's the same, no matter what it is?
Yeah, basically the same cost, it's constant fixed cost, pretty much, four thousand gallons. And, you know, when you said this twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever, that, that's pretty old for what we've been through, because I mean, a lot of high passes for a big...
Ninety-five.
It's ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, that stood at twenty-three, twenty-eight, twenty.
Yeah, three times.
Yeah, three times, that's nothing compared to what we do get sometimes.
But what's curious, why, why wasn't these coots as flooded spot? Why it was just Rainier's flooded? That doesn't make any sense.
No, 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 you should call the...
I mean, that the animal was underwater, so I don't get that.
Well, um...
It just doesn't make sense, but how, I don't know. It doesn't make any sense.
No, there's an anomaly there, Cheryl was, the numbers, I don't know what she, did you call Stacy up in the office and say, maybe you made math better, or maybe...
Oh, I sent her an email.
Yeah, well, yeah, I can't tell you why, that one, these coach was different, a different number.
Then I thought it was lower, and this was for May, when everything was built in, so I just, I don't know, I don't get it.
Those flow meters are a hundred and five.
John, explain something to me. I'm trying to, listen, that's what I'm going to say, if you come up to the mic, I can't hear. Yeah, I want you to finish, but I want to hear what you're saying. You don't have to.
So, um, yeah, I, it is not an anomaly, Cheryl, that the numbers, that our flow, our billable flow went way up like that. It's easy to see it in a big rainstorm, like normal rainstorm like this one, where it'd go up for momentarily, for a period of time, it'll go up by six or seven times. I've seen it go up by ten times. You know, that's just how much groundwater is somehow finding its way through the system. And in this case, I mean, it's just beyond what we could, anybody could have ever imagined. And there's going to be damage, and there's going to be, I figure probably, this is the same here, the technology is all the same here, the sand is going to find its way with...
Yeah.
Okay, the sand is going to find its way into the system, into the pumps, and blockages, so there's going to be, this is a big deal.
I've got a question for you, John. When the sewer district operates for a month, and they treat the sewage, and then they release it, obviously, there's monthly wages, there's monthly costs and everything else, but if they treat one million gallons or ten million gallons, at the end of the month, they still got it treated, they still release it, do they add a lot of chemicals, or what's the process? Because whether they're operating at ten percent capacity or at full capacity, where's the difference in cost? I know there's a difference in billing, and I realize that, but if we're being charged for the treatment aspect of it, is there really additional cost for the treatment when you treat ten million or one million? You know, I mean, if the plant is designed...
Yeah, 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 no, that's a legitimate question, and I don't think it's real significant.
It's mainly competition.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
So that's, that was my...
I mean, the chemical costs go up based on, normally, they're fed according to flow rate, and...
Well, that was my cost, it's possible, because they're treating so much.
Somebody brought up a legitimate, a legitimate question here, is what, how, what kind of rebates are the different entities going to get? Because the sewer district, you know, that's a big chunk of money that, you know, for doing what we're supposed to be doing, and it's hurting, I mean, the entities are going to hurt, big time. And so, you know, there's going to have to be a rebate, and I went through this once before with a rebate thing, and it didn't work out very well, but in this case, I think it justified, and we've got to take the whole board, the entire board, and the North Cootie Chamber Board, and see what they think. And I'm glad at once, you guys never place blame on anybody so far.
We haven't blamed anybody.
Yeah, because...
We just know there's a flood in our park, it could be a situation.
Yeah, it is, it's a...
It could be multiple places and multiple uses and...
Did you see the news tonight? If you read the news, yellow, in yellow zone, to see that? So that's...
Do you want to get a recommendation to, to write them a letter, or how do we, how do you want to handle this?
Or do you want to go to the board on Tuesday?
Yeah, I think I can go, I could write a ten in the board with John on Tuesday, and we'll see if we can get some relief from them, but again, there may be, there may be some relief they can do, and there may not, who will ask, I guess?
I think it's probably a good time to bring that up, the relief thing, but we don't know, we won't know how long this is going to stretch out, and so, you know, we can bring it up.
You know, if infiltration, wherever it's coming from, or whoever it's coming from, if this lake water stays till the first of August, which we're seeing, you know, if the basements are under water, and before we even get back to some semblance of, we'll probably see that same amount of infiltration, I can't see how it can change, you know, we're still, we're still at the flood height, at the maximum height today, we need the height.
However...
So, you know, all runs go last, so this may be an ongoing monthly expense that we're going to have to look at and see what we do. Again, I want to talk to them about, you know, operating expenses and something like this, maybe we can look at, do it something.
Yeah, that's right. However, there is the, you know, the fact that there is going to be repair expenses right out, right out of the chute for the, he's got to order, you know, parts and stuff right away.
Absolutely, I think ongoing, we will be applying for some of these federal state funds for cleaning, televising our sewer lines, repairs, and stuff like that, and those are all fundamental issues. I know our first job in East Grant Forks was to prepare, televise, and clean all the sewers, and fix all the collapses and the cracks and everything else. It was, it was a mega job, and we're going to have the same thing. Again, that's all fundamental. So, again, it's in the rehab, so we've got to get through this battle, and then we'll start working on some of that relief and mitigation and repairs, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So then, I guess, getting back to our North Cootie sanitation bill, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve all the, all the claims for the month except the North Cootie sanitation bill, and I will attend a meeting along with John on Tuesday to see if we can get some relief, and whatever the bill is, we'll pay it at that time.
I'll make that recommendation.
He just did, so you'll sign this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thank you. Okay, that ends our business, so we're controlled before, anybody got it? PK, anyone come up for him?
I have a petition here assigned, but I haven't got a lot of time to get it wrong, but I want to...
He doesn't say he can get sensitive advice, so everybody can do it, okay?
I want to petition George Knott to clean out mess up that he has in front of him.
The old, the old business building you're talking about?
Yes. It continues, he continues to haul stuff there almost on a daily basis, and he piles it, it's strewn from one end of the property all the way to the other end of the property, behind the building, he started to clean it up, but then he's piling up behind the building, and well, then I got to look at it from behind, and I got to look at it from in front. Everybody that drives by, it's nothing but a dump over there. The stuff is coming from that burnt house, and the stuff that he had in them garages, he got it to dump, and it just piles up and piles up, and then he plants those trees. Yes, those trees look nice, but they're sixty feet from the center of the highway, and they're supposed to be seventy-five feet, because when I put my sign up, the DOT wanted me to be seventy-five feet from the center of the highway, so when I put my sign, seventy-eight feet away from the highway. He plants them trees sixty feet from the highway. He planted some trees 60 feet from the highway. And they're nice trees, but yet, he just, he eggs everybody on, he just, he pushes it, everybody to the limit, and then he says, I'll cross that bridge when I get to it. Well, nobody does nothing to him. He filled his truck up three times from sand, from, he stole from the sandbaggers, and he put it in his garden, and late at night, he'd go and get a truckload from wherever he took it from, and he had put it in his garden, and tilled it into his garden. I mean, it's just one thing after another, and another, and another. I've called their law enforcement center multiple times. And then the fire he had on May 13th over there, he had chemicals, phosphorus or something, he had them setting outside, and when sun hit him, it ignited it, and then there was a fire. And I don't know who all was called. I was out of town at the time, but Duane Cholgin called me and says, I can't even see your place, PK, the smoke is so thick. Couldn't even see the cars going by on the highway. But he just planned with danger all the time, and he's got a whole line of batteries in the front of the building getting charged, and just, and you can have somebody do something, please.
Well, you know, we've been struggling with light ever since I've been on his council, and I got to, I got to be truthful, I do not know the specifics of our light laws. And before you can enforce light, we're going to have to have, you know, what exactly is the violation? Is it, you know, the county ordinance may have, you can't have a car that don't run, or what specific violation? We just can't say we don't like the way your house looks unless we have some kind of specific terms that we can go to and say, okay, you got to pick up your dead apples, or close your, I mean, we've got something about refrigerators and old cars and that, so at this particular time, I don't know what the violations are. According to you, there's a lot of them, but they got to be specified in our light laws before we can enforce them. And if they're not in our light laws, we can probably add them if we choose to do so. But I, I got to tell you, I don't know what they are yet. Cheryl, do we have a copy of any of the specifics on those?
Yeah, it's on the website, yeah.
Well, Joanne, this is a personal deal, because I know you're honest, so I understand that, but what we should look at is at our light laws, and specifically say, you know, we got open refrigerator, we got junked cars, then we have authority to do something about it, because they violate the specific ordinance, our light law ordinance, by having an open refrigerator, or such and so forth, and so forth. So I think before we can go any further, we have to examine our rules and understand what we can enforce and can't enforce, and if we can enforce, maybe we should be passing some laws that, you know, can be enforced that are good for the whole community. I understand your problem, but we got to be able to, you know, we got to be able to do something about it too.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't like a mess, you know that, but, so I think at this time, Joanne, if you could look through, or anybody else who wants to, and I wouldn't mind having a copy and so, because I do get a lot of calls, not just from you, but a lot of other people, and if they can give me a specific, you know, and I have quite a few that, you know, that house blew over against the power poles, I took my boat over there and pulled the trailer also away from it, and dabbled the old house, the first house there, you know, then Travis Bot, and all that, we have them dying, so I want to clean these things up too. But we got to have, you know, we just can't make it some of these houses, putting ourselves in jeopardy and being sued because there isn't a law against it. We have to make sure we have the ordinance, so I think at this time, we have to get a copy of the ordinance specifically stating-
Stating what it is.
Saying what it is, and then we can do that. It's like a speed limit, you need a speed limit. Well, what's a speed limit? Unless it's posted or something, you know, how can we, how can we enforce it?
Well, you know, with the stuff that he's got there, like, everybody's supposed to have their cars insured and licensed in their yard, okay? He's got a trailer that's, and it's been sitting there for three years, that's never done nothing with the trailer.
Well, again, if you can make the specific violations for us, then we have something going on, better in violation of the code, okay? Of whatever code we have.
I've heard quite a few where you go to the county center, but we got a-
Well, I wouldn't know it, but I don't know what they are. Obviously, you think there's some there, and there probably are, but I don't know what they are, and I can't go over there, or whoever we send over there, and say, do this, when there's no thing to park a trailer at a certain distance from a highway or something like that, so we got to have some specific, you have to look at. I think you understand, so. With that said, I think if you can do that, and I think we all should kind of refresh ourselves on, because we probably go every two months, we get some kind of complaint and send a letter, but we really got to understand these things. And if they're not strong enough, maybe we have to look at it, revisit them, and make it, but we have to make it enforceable too.
Yeah.
We just can't-
Well, he got a-
We have to make it enforceable.
He got a bike ticket from Rainier, and it was supposed to be cleaned up by April 15th, and he just laughed at it. He said, I ain't going to do that.
Totally understand, and that's why you put dates on things, and conditions on things, but without enforcement, people just laugh at it, so, but we do have to have something that's enforceable. I mean, you know, like, he'll hire an attorney, say, where's the violation? Show me. Where are your ordinances at violation, and I can't keep this or that. And if we don't have that, we lose, you know, so, you know, I want to, I don't know if there's anybody here that wants a nicer, neater community than this board, or myself, and so I'm willing to look at this, but we've got to have some specific claims and not, maybe we should make a list and review that. Like I said, we've been talking about this, you know, this, you're not by far the first one.
I know.
Happy, you know, we've had it, we went, we went, I think we've had some, relatively some success. We've tore down multiple homes, and cleaned up multiple homes, and Bob and I, who come here, wanted a place, taken care of it. It took, how long did it take us, you know, it took about a month before we got it cleaned up, but we did get it cleaned up. But, you know, it took a windstorm, and going against the power bank before, you know, there was a clear present danger that we could address and fix it, and then we did. So, again, I sympathize with you, but if you can get us some specifics, then we can, then we can apply some of our rules, or we'll make some news.
Yeah, that would be good. That would really be great.
Does he authorize the fill ditches? Or does he authorize the fill ditches on this property? You know, I did address that, and I told him, don't be filling that drainage ditch in behind until, he said, he was going to check with, not the Corps, but it was a DNR person, and he gave me the guy's name to come up, and I said, well, absolutely, don't do it until this guy comes in. I understand the ditch is on his property, and if nobody drains his property, he may have the right to do that. I don't know that. See, that's, again, it's something, you know, clearly, I don't understand, and there are rules against that, right, you know, they, but again, you don't know the situation. Filling ditches, filling ditches on your private property are-
Yeah, can you fill in a ditch a county put in, or, I mean, there's a covert there that goes under the road, and then he's going to block it off. He's, he's not putting dirt in, he inches it over every day a little bit.
Yeah, again, Tom, again, there's rules for just about everything.
I understand.
And he, I told him, whatever you do, don't fill that ditch with all that, and do it here to make you dig it out, and damages and everything else, so he assured me, you're going to have some DNR, and that DNR guy will tell him what he can and can't do, so, yeah, because they have rules, and what they are, so. I think if we leave it at that, and we can get through them, they'll bring it to us, and then we'll address them appropriately.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes?
Let's read a statement, please.
Sure, come on in.
It's always a peanut gallery.
Yeah.
Three don't say that you can't take a lot. Wow. I'm Terry Lemire. As most of you are aware, Bill and I own the lake house on Finstead Lane. While we did not suffer the kind of flood damage many of our neighbors unfortunately did, I can still say that the past several weeks have been a trying, a trying time for our family. In nearly 40 years, like everyone else here, we have not ever experienced anything like this. It seems the lake is now crested, and the long journey to a more normal lake level, as well as plans for remediation can begin. Recovery will be arduous, expensive, and will take time, but many of us are determined to come back from this experience stronger, and even more committed to preserving and valuing what, what we are so blessed with in this community. Bill and I would like to take this opportunity to thank, to express our deep heartfelt gratitude to a number of Rainier City employees, and a number of elected officials, and others who volunteered many hours of hard labor to assist us, as well as other property owners at a time of great need. Many of us were becoming exhausted mentally and physically. To have caring people, some of whom we had never even met before, show up to help was such an enormous lift to our spirits, as well as critical to protecting our home. You great folks know who you are. We cannot say thank you enough. May God bless you for your kindness, Bill and Terry Lemire.
I think that pretty much covers it all. I couldn't say it better myself, because I've seen it, I drive up and down this road every day, and do what I can as far as trying to give assistance, and again, the county people, the city officials. You know, although some of these tragedies like we have, communities really do pull together, and it's that inner strength that will make us persevere in this deal, and like I said before, we will fight this battle, and we will prevail, and then, and rest assured, I do everything I can to help the future mitigation of these problems so they don't happen again.
Appreciate that.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Second. All right, well, thank you everybody for coming. Thank you.